Gentlemen, please be upstanding to receive the Lord Mayor of Liverpool, councillor Anna Robbery. And to advise members that apologies for absence have been received from councillors John Colbert, Dave Cummings, Ross Gladden, Ross Clums, George Smith, John Metz, Gary Miller, James Nowes, Frank Nagas, Dean Robinson and Thomas. Are there any other issues to report? Councillor Sean Ross and councillor George Smith. Nick Crofts. Okay, can I remind members that you're only required to declare at meetings any disclosure you know you are of interest, in which case you may need to leave the change during consideration of the item. Are there any such declarations?
Can we move on to ISO 3, consultation with people of Liverpool as the future of the elected mayor of the city by councillor Richard Kemp, councillor Brown, councillor Suarez, councillor Kelly, councillor Mayson, councillor Liz Mayson, councillor Carstoddy and councillor Anthony. Would you like to move the motion, councillor Kemp?
Well, thank you for that. We've had a very pleasant order start to this meeting. Now we get to the main dish. Being vegetarian, I hope it will not be a meat-based dish and we will not fight each other with tooth and claw because something significant seems to have happened to me. Although we have some differences with the amendment that we ruled later, I think by councillor Parsons, we do agree, but there needs to be consultation of the system of governance that this council has, and I think that is a major step forward. It's been interesting, hasn't it, the number of people who've wanted to comment on this? I don't know whether you saw the voice of the people, Colin, the voice of the people, from a column, from a paper within the Trinity Mirror Group that really was relevant of the 1960s. I don't know how many of you are old enough to remember, but the Daily Mirror had a person called Lobby Lud. And the lobby used to go and say, this guy's photograph, and he went to, say, up, he'll be in Scarborough, and if you could challenge Lobby Lud with a copy of the Daily Mirror, get the challenge right, you got a five. And I was just wondering whether Alistair MacRae has been getting out his flat cap in this twenty-four months.
We've been talking about Labour, and it's actually chalky, why is it?
Then Lobby Lud, well, perhaps it was the people, perhaps it was the people.
Well, five, Colin.
No, no, gentlemen, can we get on with the business of my business?
I read The Observer, I thought, I thought it was a thing. But has he gone out? The answer is that the voice of the people, if you want to be the voice of the people in this city, you have to do what everyone here does. You have to go out and talk to people, and more importantly, listen to them. And clearly, the voice of the people hasn't. And then we had last week, an intervention by Len Lepuski. There we have a person whose renowned Scouseness is now confined only to his accent, who is pursuing policies...
Councillor Kemp, can we be friends from making accusations or is not recriminations against people?
Yes, I am doing it, because I'm certainly, you know, this is a political point that I'm making. But the blind on me, just, just, it really is important, the facts are out there if you're going to engage. The communication that was sent out from United Union came from Rishi James, leading organisation, not from Len Lepuski. The headline of the Echo was Len Lepuski's man, or Len Lepuski's union, back to Anderson. It was Rishi James, the leader of the organisation, that sent out the letter on behalf of J. Thorpe. Well, I can, not knowing how Unite works, as you do, I'm happy to accept that as well. But there are two points that I want to make about what's on the order paper today before we start the heart of the debate. I noticed from the amendment that you want to delete the reference to the fact that the Lib Dems tried to call the meeting earlier this year. I've got no problem with that. We didn't put it in in the first place. It went in because officers suggested it should go in, see in a report from the chief executive. He makes it clear what happened. We don't need to put it in because the people of Liverpool know where we stand. The other thing that has come up is that the report produced by the chief executive referred only to the two of the models available. I don't know why that is. We didn't ask for that to happen because our motion is quite clear that it asked for a discussion on the three substantive points, and in fact, of course, the fourth option, which is a hybrid model, which we won't be supporting for a variety of reasons. So, where are we? Well, let's go back to when this all started. In 2012, this council dodged a referendum which would have put the choice of the people of Liverpool by just two days. The Liberalism Act had been introduced, a statutory instrument was prepared that was going to be put to a committee of the House with a debate. It was a debated statutory instrument. And in fact, two days before that happened, we had a move in this council chamber without having a referendum, without consulting the people of Liverpool to move to a mayoral system. And that has been resented by people in Liverpool ever since. For your information, of the eleven remaining councils that had a referendum, one, Bristol, voted to have a mayoralty, and there is now a referendum being planned to get rid of that mayoralty. And the remaining ten councillors, all of them led by Labour councillors, decided against having a mayoral model on the advice of the Labour leaders of those councils. One of the key elements that we were told was going to make all this worthwhile was the fact that because there'd been meetings with George Osborne, there was going to be an unlimited corneucopia of money flowing into this city. Of course, that never happened. And in two weeks' time, when we have a special budget, a special budget meeting of this council, we will be looking at the realities of that. The second thing that hasn't, that has changed since we first went to this is that we now have, of course, a second mayor. It's interesting that there have been two reports about the mayoralty in Liverpool. The first was by Professor Michael Parkinson, and it looked at the differences between leader Anderson and Mayor Anderson. Unsurprisingly, it recognised that he was doing better as a mayor because, of course, he's been in the job longer. The second looked at what could be learned from a mayoral model as distinct, in a way that could be applied to, at the time, the emerging city region mayor, which, of course, we all know the existing city mayor would have liked to occupy the seat of. It's concluded that there was nothing particularly relevant about the city model, because, of course, the city region model is a entirely different job. It's interesting to note that, as the chief executive tells us in his report, there has never been a review on whether elected mayoralities work generally, although successive governments have pushed them, both for councils and, of course, the new combined authorities or county regions, or indeed for our own model. But we do know if we look at any comparison between this council and the other core cities, that the mayoral model has failed to deliver. Now, we don't know that officially, because in 2014, I'm sorry if I go back a bit, but that's how long this has all been going on, the council took a decision against the advice of councillor Radford and I, our members, councillor Pro, or your predecessor as leader in the mayoral select committee, that we should have a regular audit of the council of the KPIs, key performance indicators, with other city regions. So we are not able, as a council, to compare ourselves. But let me tell you that those other councils, I think I had ten minutes to review the debate.
Okay, I've got ten minutes. Oh, no, right now, councillor Kemp?
Well, it seems to vary from time to time. So, in that case, I will close. I say that we will be opposing the Labour amendment, but I intend anyway to deal with that when I reply to the debate on the, on this main item. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kemp. Can I just say you've actually had eight minutes, so not four, it's ten. Is this second?
Second, isn't it?
Thank you, councillor Mayson. I've had an indication from councillor Radford. Oh, sorry, move the, sorry, come on, actually, they won't be listening first time. Can I ask councillor Parsons to move the amendment, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and welcome. This feature of Liverpool, very moving. This amendment is really important, and it's important because while we're sitting in this chamber, there are communities across the city in pain. There are communities hurting as a result of austerity. I've spent the summer feeding families in food poverty. I've been in homes in the last few weeks in the city in communities that have been infested with cockroaches to such an extent that power agencies will no longer visit. It's really shocking, but that's what's actually happening in some of the communities in this city, and I sat in Coward and cried about that. In two weeks' time, we'll sit here in this chamber again and discuss the painful task of making yet more cuts. We face telling people that the services they rely on could be curtailed because of government austerity. And all of us in this chamber, every one of us, must bear the responsibility for making the necessary changes over the way our city is run. We must make sure that the people of this city are connected with the administration of the services that they depend on. The mayor's inclusive growth plan states clearly Liverpool City Council exists to serve the interests of citizens and communities, to ensure the best outcomes for them. To do this, councillor Kemp, it's right, we need to listen. We need to involve our communities in both the design and delivery of services, but also in the process of decision-making. The mayor's plan is radical, but it will change the way our city develops. We can only help people build wealth for themselves, their families and their communities if we make our city and our economy more inclusive. And to make that happen, our city needs a conversation with people about how at every level it's wrong. We need to empower people to tell us what they want and what they need to make change, and we're already working really hard to put this in place. We've commissioned inside work, and initial feedback has identified that unfortunately, many people within our communities don't understand the services that the council are responsible for and provide, let alone how decisions or governance is made. We've just rehired resources to form city conversation teams to work with elected members, communities and partners to identify, promote and build on excellent initiatives and activity that always has escalated in some areas. We need to hear everybody, residents, businesses, community organisations, making sure that we don't just listen to the loud voices, but that we hear the voices of many, not the few. We cannot shift the culture of how we operate and make engagement meaningful in a short space of time. We are changing the entire culture of the council and the way that it responds and works with our communities. It really matters. It's really important that we get it right, because people's lives depend on this and the way that we deliver. We need to build trust in our neighbourhoods and ask people to engage with us, and they won't do that if we go in and demand that change happens. Change is frightening for people who are already frightened. The mechanism we use to engage citizens on governance arrangements has to be fit for purpose, and it needs to be impartial, and it needs to be based on fact and inclusive. It should not detract from city conversation engagement about how we work with communities effectively, but it needs to complement it and be part of that process. And let's be clear, under no circumstances should it be a desperate political stunt to get people into the newspaper or the Lib Dems and to provide a narrative for your influence. Let me clarify, and I can use fancy words about this process of city conversation. I can talk about co-creation, empowerment and participation. But as we're forced to make the most painful cuts our generations ever had to endure, there is a simple truth. The people of this city expect us to work with them to solve problems. They expect us to give them control and improve our city with them in the driving seat, and that's the process that we are already engaged in. That's why this Labour administration respects the people of this city and the knowledge that we've already got, and that's why we are moving this amendment.
Thank you, councillor Parsons. Councillor, do we have a second of your amendment, please? Councillor Simon, the second. Do we have any indications to, oh, sorry, councillor Radford, to speak to the main motion?
Can I, my Lord Mayor, speak to both the main motion and the amendment? Just make some generic points, which I do think are valid, and I know I'll probably successfully upset everybody, which is plausible, if you're going to work on the basis of. I think the expectations of a mayoral model was going to achieve is probably exaggerated by those big group of voters, just as the failures of a mayoral model are being exaggerated by those big moral movements. One of the comments councillor Parsons used was talking about impartiality and, and objectivity. Well, I'm going to be honest, I think on a couple of occasions, the, the officer of mayor has been detracted from when we did it, basically political stunts like the promise over the Carlton site, which was a pure deception being sorted out and brought the office into disrepute. I'll say that upfront. I think the, the use of public funds for employment tribunal, I still think was ethically wrong, and I think a large number of the public do not understand the legal nuances given to why it was done. But I'll set those criticisms aside. I do not believe genuinely that this city council could have coped with the financial downsizing and the decision-making that had to be made without the mayoral model. I say that for two reasons. I say that because as a personal manager working at an international telecommunications firm, I had to deal with several major difficulties. And actually, by being honest with our community representatives and employees, and actually taking difficult decisions early, meant there was less pain based down the line. The lobbying pull off of an actually difficult situation, the harsher the law when it hits the railway line. You can't do it. And I'll be honest, I sat through the party, and to add great pleasure to the work, particularly the councillor Ross, and, and there was conflict. That will make a difficult decision to walk in there with different choices. But at the end of the day, everybody had the chance to put their comments to the mayor. The mayor consulted probably wider than he would have had we had the judicial policy system. I'll be upfront to that, and I thank you for that. And the decision was made. It wasn't thrown in the long grass. And I think that essentially helped Liverpool cope with the most dramatic downsizing of any council anywhere in history of government since we liberals created it, back in the 1880s to a last degree. Don't think anywhere else put a coat. And the second thing is, if we go to discuss changing the system, we've got to look ahead. Do we believe that the size of the financial challenges coming to this city, regardless of whether Jeremy Corbyn wants to, what about having a general election or decides to have one this week, then will anything change? The reality is no. Don't think that is on the horizon. So I'll be absolutely upfront, we in the little party group would support the retention of the mayoral model. The second reason is, I'm going to say that without any personal dislike for that, I think had we had a more dynamic or impact made by a city, maybe a different pace. I think, to be honest with myself, we'd all count any street in the city, even if we were saying the city region, that has a negative impact, was expected. And I don't say that in any slight or act to say that, as well I hear every time the conversation comes up. Lastly, there is one third question, is do we believe...
Councillor Radford, can you come to a closing?
Well, I think, well, I think the third question is, do we think that international business would take us more seriously in terms of that, but I do not. Therefore, I won't support the motion made by the Lib Dems. I think it's actually gesture politics. They've already declared they don't want the mayoral system. Fine, that's fine, that's very nice. They've declared in the old sort. My election will declare, we think that the challenges of the city need to continue, and I'm sure the consultation by those people who have considered interest in the city will come to the same conclusion. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, councillor Radford. Our notification from councillor Leeson. Did you hear that wanted to speak? The second, yeah.
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. The straw argument made by Sun, including the Echo, is that the mayoral model is the Tories' preferred way of dealing with major cities. Well, and I'm expected to hear that Liverpool should pander to the Tories. But even if you write into this your argument, the mayoral model was the pet project of David Cameron and George Osborne, and indeed was also Tony Blair's project before that. It's obvious to everyone, except perhaps the voice of the Echo, that the world's changed in the last four years. Even if you were naive enough to believe that Cameron and Osborne would have granted Liverpool any special favours, they're yesterday's men. The argument goes on that we shouldn't model ourselves on places like Stoke or Sunderland when we're a major city. Well, major cities like Birmingham, Leeds, Manchester, Glasgow and Edinburgh are all prospering without an elected mayor. So why do we insist on modelling ourselves on Doncaster, Salford, Mansfield and Copland, wherever that is? We're Liverpool, and we're bigger than one person's ego. We didn't need an elected mayor to regenerate the city centre, Liverpool One, the Peterhead or the Arena Convention Centre. We're one capital of culture without an elected mayor. And if you believe we need a figurehead who can carry weight with investors and lobby for big projects, well, that's the metro mayor's job. That's what he should be doing. We don't need two mayors representing us in Cannes. We're amused investors, like you're wondering which mayor we should be speaking to. We're left with less influence than places like Manchester, because that influence is getting diluted between two mayors and a police commissioner. And if you believe you could get three Labour politicians to work together, which proved incapable of doing so far, you still can't guarantee that in future you will have three positions being held by members of the same party. Now, I don't really even directly elect executives. I'd much rather see some sort of regional assembly with real devolved power. But if we must use that model, let's just have one person fighting for our city future instead of three fighting amongst themselves. My Lord Mayor, there's still inherent resentment in the city that people weren't given a proper say in 2012 or when you say it all. So let's have a real consultation now, with a guarantee the mayoral system will end in May if that is what people decide.
Can we have councillor Tom Crom? If you can, just speak.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Nearly two terms after the mayoral model was opposed on the people of Liverpool without a referendum, I do think there really is indeed enough to have a proper debate and actually consult the people of Liverpool. The green position's always been that the mayoral model was too centralised with one person having anybody to set the agenda to make most of the decisions in the council. That's just what happens should be. We've got select committees that have got more or less no power and routinely ignored, the cabinet which are just rubber stamping decisions that have already been made. We need a much more inclusive governance arrangement so that all councils, all elected members from different parties are properly engaged in policy development and decision-making. Unlike councillor Radford, I do think that more people being involved in decision-making will lead to better outcomes. It's actually about democracy, it's as simple as that. We're all elected, we should all be able to do our jobs and represent the people who elected us. So there are various systems which could be adopted, and I think most of them are better than the mayoral system. And I was going to support the motion. I think the problem with the amendment is that it actually removes the, the key point of the, of the whole motion, which is that we will consult the people, we'll ask for their opinions, and we'll base our future decisions on what they say to us. The city conversation is, it's, it's an unclear mechanism. We don't really know what we're doing here, and we don't know what the outcomes will be. So makes the whole thing a bit pointless. We really should vote against this amendment, keep it as it was, and then have a proper consultation to decide our future.
Thank you, councillor Kemp. Can I, councillor Anderson, please, if you're ready, to speak?
Lord Mayor, I want to deal with just a couple of things quickly, the both really from councillor Kemp. I would like to put it out there, especially to some of new councillors and even some that have moved, I want to say, ten, twelve, twelve years ago. I was watching the new way of polling today, and I can't remember what, but they challenged Boris Johnson and said, listen, it doesn't matter what you say, because no one believes you. You basically tell lies, no one believes you. And that's the same problem with the Democrats, it's the same problem with councillor Kemp. No one believes them because they tell lies and they continue to tell lies. Because let's just revere back a little bit, it's important that people understand the local government act in 2001 and then amended in 2003. So when the little Democrats were empowered in 1997, in 2002, they went from a committee system, they went from a committee system to a leader and cabinet member. And that was the options for the mayoral model within the local government act. Did they consult that? Did they have a referendum? Did they just vote to approve or admire what anybody said? Exactly. So that's quite easy, that's the whole of the crap. Let's then talk about Tom Crom's issue around democracy. Did you read the LGA report, councillor Crom? Did you read the LGA report? Actually said that we've got more scrutiny than any other council in the country. Okay, that's what they said. The defendants, Lib Dems, business people, chief executives from other councils, that's exactly what they said. Now, from the point of view of regeneration, from the point of view of scrutiny and regeneration being scrutinised, every single development goes through a process of procurement, goes through planning and is scrutinised. It's absolutely a myth and a lie to suggest that developers get their own way. The only way that happens is in a tinpot dictatorship in a foreign country. Doesn't happen here in Liverpool, but it doesn't happen anywhere else where they have a mayoral model. It's disingenuous and a lie to say that it is. But the point of the debate that we're having, and councillor Kemp will again tell you that we should consult with the people of the city. Now, I looked at the Echo websites, and councillor Kemp set up a petition, or he told the Echo, he was setting up a petition against the mayoral model. There is not, he never did. But there is one that's set up called change.org, and the 600 odd people, that's how many, since 2013, 600 people have signed that petition. Equally, when you look at it, every single election, 2012, 2016, there's been five, six candidates that have stood out in the eleven in 2016, and I think thirteen in 2012 that said they would scrap the bid and revert back to the legal model. Percentage wise, really poor, and it was, it's simple figures, the culmination of all of those candidates got. So the very idea that the people of this city are chomping at the bit to actually change a model of governance, whereas rightly being said, we've got one in four kids living in poverty, we've got real problems that we're facing. But equally... But equally, we're seeing the growth of the economy of this city with 30,000 people in wait, with 4,400 businesses being created, 7.6 billion pounds worth of investment in the last three years and taking place five miles of regeneration from Bramley Moor right the way through to South Liverpool. That's going to transform this city. You have the Paddington Village, look at that 1.2 billion pounds of debt development that trumps the 30 acres that will be developed, trumps Liverpool One. And don't you dare claim credit for capital ownership or claim credit for the Arena and Convention Centre because it was actually, and we are still paying for it, it was actually the European Development Fund that funded those. And it's actually, by the way, an incredulous to Steve Rodman, the metro mayor. Steve doesn't run Liverpool, neither does he run Sefton, neither does he run Wimbledon or Holton. What he does do is support economic growth. That's why the city region is supporting Paddington Village, that's why the city region is supporting the new cruise liner table, that's why the city region is supporting us in Pall Mall. We're going to be creating thousands more jobs. Not only that's going to provide investment and revenue to pay our long service, that is what we want to keep, but it's talking about investment of the future of our city and that's what a mayor does. That's what a mayor brings to the table and that's vision, but it's also working with the unions, working with the policy sector, working with the private sector and working with this council too.
Can I bring in councillor Lake?
Can we move to the votes, or not?
There's two more people have indicated to speak. And then we've got a write-in reply from councillor Kemp and did you second vote it? Councillor Simon? Councillor Lake, can you...
Lord Mayor, it's being moved that the question be put, that normally goes procedurally to the council to vote on, that the question be put.
I'm going to take the indicated councillor Lake, please.
Yeah, I'm sure we've all read the agenda and I'll just refer to a couple of points from the agenda. And the first point is that it's about the time, just making decisions on future governance in such time as is necessary to conclude. Well, when will that be? And when would be the right time for this consultation, given the national scenarios which are being played out at the moment and the ramifications that surely will follow there? The other point here in the notes is that since the mid 2000s, the policy of successive governance has been one of encouraging local authorities, especially core cities, to consider changing their governance arrangements to that of the elected mayor. So why are we going to fly in the face of that now and at this pivotal time? And what message does that send to our detractors at a time when the management of our budget going forward will be absolutely key and be crucial in the next moments? When we look at the differences between the two models, in the leader and cabinet, the leader is elected by the council for a period of up to four years and can be removed by a simple majority vote, which I would suggest would be quite frequently and far too frequently for consistency to prevail. I believe that the city of Liverpool deserves the gravitas of the office of mayor. It's an office that's understood and recognised all around Europe and the rest of the world, which is important if we are to assert ourselves in global markets. The office does betray, betray rather, stability and business crave stability. If the office of regional mayor was actually punching its weight as it does elsewhere, then maybe we wouldn't need this profile, but we do. However, the office should not be at the centre of a personality cult, nor should it be at the centre of a personality witch hunt. The office of mayor, the office of mayor and what it can do for the city and bring to the city is much more important than that.
Okay, I'm going to move to the write-in reply from councillor Kemp and then I'm going to move to a vote on this.
Why not, let me just begin by correcting the elected mayor who has a poor recollection of the date. We took the trouble of the council in 1998. We introduced a cabinet and leader system in 1999 because the law then was that we could not have a committee system that was brought in by the Localism Act. And we actually introduced the system from 1999, although we didn't want to. We had the choice then of a committee system or a mayor system. These are facts, Mayor Anderson. And we would have preferred at that time to go through the committee system, which we massively improved by taking out loads of subcommittees and working parties and task groups and having a small group of people who were able to represent the council so that quick decisions could be taken, but nevertheless having a select committee, we called it select committee, not scrutiny system, which would enable more detailed scrutiny, particularly long-term scrutiny, to take place. But why aren't we supporting the amendment today? Because I don't think most members of the Labour Party actually realise that this is just putting the whole issue into the long grass to get us through the next elections. In Torbay in 2013, there was a referendum to get rid of the mayors, 2016, I apologise, there was a referendum to get rid of the mayor's team. The mayor was in position despite losing that referendum till May this year. Because if the situation happens that a mayor gets elected next May, then they will stay in place till 2024 unless that mayor chooses to resign. That is the pledge that will be in the Liberal Democrat manifesto that the Liberal Democrat candidate for mayor will make at that time. We do not believe that the mayor model is right. We believe, contrary to what you've heard, all the evidence is that Liverpool is a poorly performing city. If you look at the key performance indicators on education, investment and quality of investment against other poor cities, and I must say councillor Crome is right when he talks about the quality of developers that we've attracted. There are 15 key developments in this city, un-ville, half-ville, having to be closed. Manchester has one.
Councillor Kemp.
Chinatown.
Councillor Kemp.
There's one, there's one.
Just one moment, please. Councillor Kemp, can you please refrain from making accusations, as I should substantiate them, which I don't believe you can.
All those would be well, well, they'd be...
Councillor Kemp, you're right, but now please, your time is up.
But I won't respond if you don't want me to, to the...
Councillor Kemp, can you private?
I simply say, my Lord Mayor, that do not put this into the long grass. If you do, I can tell you now that we will bring it back in time for a decision to be made before the necessary steps have to be taken for the May 2020 elections. Do this properly, do this quickly or we will be bringing this hype together.
Thank you, councillor Kemp. I'm going to now move to a vote on the amendments.
So, my Lord Mayor. Have a car vote, please, on your amendments.
Okay.
A piece of votes on the amendments. Banks. Biden. Bennett. Barry. Brandt. Brown, Chris Brown. Lomas Brown. Byrne. Calvert. Clark. Cullen. Conception. Kine. Corbett. Crofts. Crome. Cummings. Davis. Tidbury. Harry Wil. Sarah Wil. Dunn. Corn. Boss Bladden. Roy Bladden. Gost. Groves. Hanson. Hayden. Hinnigan. Hurley. Jennings. Wallace. Kelly. Kemp. Kennedy. Kenyon. Key. Neagh. Knight. Barry Bushner. John Bushner. Billy Lake. Fraser Lake. Label. Logan. Mace. Andrew MacIntyre. Liz MacIntyre. Maris. McIntyre. McLendon. Mealy. Miller. Mitchell. Morton. Monby. Murray. Nicholas. Noakes. O'Brien. O'Byrne. All. Parsons. Premigas. Prince. Kedier. Raffford. Rosmussen. Roberts. Robertson Collins. Robinson. Ross. Say. Simon. Small. Spurle. Story. Thomas. Thompson. Tuwen. Toole. Tommy. Walker. Walton. Wood. Woodhouse. And, Lord Mayor?